I would like to call to order this meeting of the City Council for December 11th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hersi?
Here.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop? Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Do we have any? Okay, not to consider tonight. I don't believe there are any additions to the agenda. We'll move on to presentations and public input. Given the small number of people in the audience, I think we'll do public input first. So does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? You'll have five minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
All right. Adam Nichols. Got the tall person mic today. I wanted to come here to thank you, City Council, for postponing the budget decision last week, at least until the Barry Dunn report comes back. So I wanted to come out and just personally come out and say thanks. I also wanted to correct the record. Last week, I said that the police budget went up 2.75 million. I was able to go back at the city website and check that, and that's not what the city website says. It says it was 1.6 million increase. So I just want to make sure we're working from correct data here, so I don't want to tell you something and then have it be wrong. I also wanted to make sure the council was aware that the presentation that we saw last week from Chief Boone omitted some key context. So, for example, he cited the crime rate going down as evidence that his programs work. What he didn't say is that the national crime rate also went down in the same three years. Meanwhile, when we were looking at the Urbana crime rate going down, he just kind of said, oh, that matches the natural, national trends, and kind of went on to the next slide. So if he's going to give credit for his programs bringing down the crime rate, then he should also give credit to the local PD for doing the same. He also admitted the fourth year of his tenure as the city, as the chief of police in Norfolk, and the crime went way up while his programs were all still in effect. So again, this matches national trends. And I don't think this means his programs don't work. I'm a supporter of some of them, like the clergy patrol. So I'm not saying these are wrong. I'm just saying the evidence doesn't, like, that evidence doesn't support these programs working. He said that, he's consistently said that Urbana is more law enforcement. But he didn't mention that we already have the number, the ratio of law enforcement officers to civilians as the median for a community our size, or that we spend 16.8% of the total budget, this comes from the city website, on police where the national average is 9.2%. So when he says we need more police officers, that's his opinion, and he's entitled to that. But it doesn't line up with where other cities in the nation are. So it seems like when he talks about making these data different decisions, but when it comes to data that doesn't support his agenda that he's made up and submitted, they just kind of, they just don't get mentioned. So this might just come from being part of the justice system, where, you know, one side presents only things that make the person look guilty, the other side presents only things that make them look innocent, and then a judge decides, and it might just be kind of the culture. Personally, maybe I'm a little naive in thinking that if you go and address the city council and give them information for them to make a decision, you'd be showing the whole picture. I feel like that's the way it should work. If it doesn't work that way, there should be some kind of presentation to show the other side. So we heard from people in the audience before the presentation, but we couldn't respond to anything in the presentation. So again, I appreciate you not voting on it immediately and giving it time so that people can weigh in. Let's see, what else do I got? Yeah, so I do hope that Chief Boone is sincere in his statements when he says he wants to work with the community. Many of us want to work with him as well. So I hope that he doesn't continue to push his agenda before he gets the Barry Dunn report, before the public's even able to see it, let alone give input on it, and that he's willing to listen to us and work with us and try and come up with something that meets in the middle. So I will be taking him up on his offer to call him and discuss his policies once he releases his plan to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone wish, else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. We'll move on to the two presentations for tonight. The first one is the financial forecast for fiscal year 2025 through 2029.
All right. So as you all know by now, this is an annual exercise that, that we do here at the city of Urbana. And in fact, our financial policies require that we prepare a financial forecast each year. It's worth noting that you're seeing this about six weeks earlier than you did last year. And the reason for that is we're trying to shift the budget schedule earlier. So we're hopeful that we can present the budget in late April of 2024 this year. So this is the first, really, what we think of, finance people think of, as the first step in our annual budget process. The focus of the forecast is on the general operating fund. You may hear some mentions of other funds in here, but the focus of the forecast is definitely general fund. And as you know, that's where we pay for most of what people consider basic city services. Most of our police and fire departments are funded from the general fund, most of our public work services. So the goal here is to evaluate our financial condition and kind of make some high-level decisions about the budget process that's coming. So I know I talk about this every year, and it probably gets a little bit old, but we can't actually predict the future. Ally, Ally and I are not magicians. So when I say that there's risk in the forecast, what I mean is the only thing that is certain is that we won't be exactly right. You know, we're just trying to get an idea of what the future may hold. So the likely scenario that we'll talk about here includes assumptions that we think are most probable. So that's what we plan around. But we also are continuously monitoring for improvement or deterioration that would tell us that we're really on a different path. In terms of economic outlook, a lot, a lot has changed since last year. Last year, we were concerned about a recession, and it seems like that is not likely at this point. We expect the soft landing. Inflation is easing, and it's going to stabilize. And long-term, we think we're looking at an inflation rate of about 2.7%. And for that information, we rely very heavily on the Philadelphia Federal Reserve Survey of Economic Forecasters that they update quarterly. So just to note, last time we looked at the forecast, the long-term inflation projections were between 2 and 2.5%. So that is higher at this point. So the outlook this year, I would, I would say is very positive. We are able to absorb some new recurring expenditures as we go into the next budget cycle. However, even with that, I think our needs probably exceed what we're going to be able to fund. So there may be some need to talk about revenue increases, but timing on that would be dependent on, you know, when the city council elects to do certain expenditure increases. I would say that there are probably some difficult decisions ahead for the city council. Unfortunately, you are, you are the people that get to make those decisions in the end, and I don't think they're going to be easy. So with that, I'm going to give it to Ally to go over some of the details.
And I meant to introduce Alyanna Robinson, who's our financial analyst, and then Elizabeth Hannah, our finance HR director, was just speaking.
All right. So I would like to point out a couple of things from one of our, a couple of things from the key assumptions. So one, the special census financial impact. So anticipating the completion of the special census around late 2024, we expect a financial impact during the second half of fiscal year 2025. So based on our likely assumptions of a population count reaching up to 41,000, so that's about 2,600 increase from the current. So this is projected to yield about $500,000 in the general fund, primarily from use tax and income tax, which both are based on per capita distribution. And then we also incorporated a total of 6.8 million to capital improvement projects over the next four years, and this includes $800,000 one-time expense to fund for equity and quality of life projects. All right. And so maintaining a financial stability is essential for any city or organization. So we look at two primary indicators to evaluate our financial condition. So one is recurring expenditures as a percentage of recurring revenue. So this indicates the ability to sustain expenditures for programs and services over the long term, and it ensures that the city maintains a balance and does not make long-term commitments for which funding isn't available in the future. So the city's current policy is budgeting recurring expenditures at more than 98.5% of recurring revenues. And so this creates a buffer to, to absorb moderate variations in revenue without compromising ongoing services. The second indicator we use is the fund balance as a percent of recurring expenditures. And so, so this is a very important indicator as well to evaluate our financial condition. So this provides the city the flexibility to withstand or...
I think your mic, Ally, excuse me, I think your mic may have cut out.
So the city's current policy is maintaining a fund balance of at least 25% of recurring expenditures. And again, this aims to make sure that the city can deal with any, is in a better financial position to deal with any unexpected events such as natural disaster or any fiscal emergencies. All right. So this chart shows the projected recurring revenues and expenditures through fiscal year 2025 under the likely assumption. And as you can see, the recurring revenues, which are the green bars, stay above recurring expenditures throughout the forecast period. And so this tells us that the city is able to support new expenditures within certain limitations. And this chart shows the rate of growth in recurring revenue and expenses. So beginning fiscal year 2026, the trajectory of recurring revenues begin to stabilize. So the higher growth in fiscal year 2025 is partly due to the impact of the special census, which primarily affects the use tax and income tax revenues in the general fund. The property tax increase also contributed to the increase in recurring revenues in the general fund in fiscal year 2025. So this is also similar trend, as you are seeing, with recurring expenditures, which begin to stabilize in fiscal year 2026. So again, the increase in fiscal year 2025 is also primarily driven by the pension cost, which is a pass-through expense. So it's the largest share of the tax levy, the total tax levy that goes through the general fund. And so the city's general fund continues to show fiscal gap. So under the likely scenario, we can see that the revenues, the recurring revenues does not grow, do not grow as fast as recurring expenditures throughout the forecast period. So if this trend continues, we will be in a, or the city will be in a position of requiring revenue increases in the longer term. And this chart shows the fund balance throughout the forecast period under a likely scenario, that it will remain relatively stable. In the best-case scenario, we can see that the fund balance will increase modestly. Under worst-case scenario, we can see that the fund balance will decrease over time. And focusing on the likely scenario, the fund balance is expected to exceed 25% fund balance go throughout the forecast period. And so this provides a buffer against modest fluctuations or any unexpected events against, such as natural disasters or fiscal emergencies. So any excess fund balance will be most likely used towards one-time expenditures to the extent it is not needed for new recurring expenditures. And I will hand it back over to Elizabeth, which she will go over recommended strategies.
So in this year's forecast, we, we recommended three strategies. First, carefully considering and prioritizing new expenditures. Second, planning for revenue increase. And third, and I don't think there's ever a time when we won't say this, continuing to make economic development a priority. And the reason I say there's never a time we won't say that is because that's what will give us that stable growth in revenues that we really need to make this sustainable. So we've identified, well, we and the city council have identified a number of needs across the city. I'm not going to go into detail on these, but those include responding to needs in the police department that will be identified in the public safety study, retaining some or all of the six firefighters who are currently funded through the SAFER grant, other public safety study recommendations that will be related to the fire department possibly, other potential expenditures related to new city council goals, which you're still defining. There will be some adjustments needed to address a funding gap in the vehicle and equipment replacement. And I know that sounds kind of boring, but it's true. And then there are a number, over the last few years, when we really weren't sure, during the pandemic and afterwards, kind of what, what our future looked like, there were a number of limited-term positions that we funded. But at some point, a decision will have to be made about those positions, whether to continue them with recurring funding or to not continue them. So doing all of those things is a, is a very large number, certainly. And again, it's the city council that has to decide which of those things we will be doing. So quickly talking about planning for revenue increases. So Ally pointed out that gap between the growth in recurring revenue and expenditure. Eventually, at some point, regardless of whether we were to add new expenditures, we would need to address this. And as you know, we have been looking at new revenue options. We've had some conversations about that. We're, we're, you know, I won't say continuously, but regularly updating our estimates of how much revenue could be generated from various sources. So some of the options, and again, nothing is being recommended at this point. Just ideas, an amusement tax applied to streaming services, which is, which is referred to as cloud tax, cloud tax in the Chicago area. User fees possibly for fire services, such as lift assistance, package liquor tax increase, cigarette tax, self-storage rental tax. Really, as a home, home rural community, we have a very broad range of options. And then in terms of economic development, one of the strategies that we just wanted to highlight for you again, we talked about this last year, was the potential benefit of adding additional market rate housing units. And we did some estimates based on those, that adding 1,000 units as a realistic target could result in an increase in annual revenues of over half a million dollars. So economic development is always going to be important to maintaining a stable revenue base. So that's, that's it. We ran a little bit over time, but we're happy to answer questions.
Chris?
Thank you for the presentation. What is, quote, "other public safety study recommendations related to the fire department"? What is that?
Well, if I had seen the public safety study, I would tell you. But we're assuming, because they're looking at both the police and fire departments, that there will be recommendations related to both of those departments that will require funding.
What about the two fire stations?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's being addressed in the public safety study. That's something that's already underway.
But it's not in our financial forecast? But we're just assuming it's there, or what?
So it's not in our financial forecast because the focus of the financial forecast is in the general fund, but that is already planned in the capital improvement plan. I know you'll be having another conversation about that soon. I don't remember the exact timing.
Okay. So what happened to property taxes and retail sales taxes?
So, so as, as you know, there is a longer list of revenue options. What I meant to do today was just give you a few examples, not to give you the whole exhaustive list of all the revenue options.
So property tax increase and a revenue, I mean, a retail sales tax increase is a possibility?
Sure. As a home rural community, we could choose to increase our property tax rate. We could choose to increase our home rural sales tax rate. Those are options.
Thank you.
Grace?
Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate the goal of trying to have a draft by April so we can have some more discussion and clarifying that these will be some hard decisions for council to make as representatives of the public. I was wondering if we could have a little more information and later is fine about some of the assumptions in your forecast. I know you gave some general ones, but I wasn't sure, like, what of those recommended strategies are already in your projections of revenue and expenditures?
Sure. And if you look at the printed report, there actually is a fairly long list of assumptions on pages six, seven, and eight. So if there's something you're looking for that's not there, maybe shoot, shoot me an email.
Yeah, I guess my main question is, as far as the strategies, like, are any of those strategies in there? Like additional 2 million for police or whatever for fire? Are those in there already?
So none of the, none, none of those new expenditure, potential new expenditures that I listed are in the forecast at all, right?
Yeah, so the forecast does not include any new recurring expenditures.
Okay. And another question was about the fund balance, because currently, my understanding is that our fund balance for stuff that's not already allocated is only 11 million. And I'm confused why we would think that the fund balance would be 25 million in '24 through '29.
So we're, so we're constantly updating this, right? So the estimate you, you have been seeing up to this point is based on when we prepared the last budget. So now that the fiscal year is done, the year is closed, we have the audit pretty well completed. You'll see that fairly soon. We have a much better estimate of that number, and it is bigger than we expected.
So we expect this year will be a higher fund balance than that 11 million?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then just one last thought was, just love to see if we're talking about revenue stuff, also a bag fee, but maybe that's a discussion for our goals and other stuff.
Any other questions? Thank you. And next on the agenda is a presentation by representatives from the Human Rights Commission, as well as our, so Shalini Smith, who serves as vice chair of the Human Relations Commission, and then Carla Boyd, our Human Rights and Equity Officer.
I'll try that again. Good evening, council and staff and the public community. We're here to talk about the Human Rights Ordinance 1222G section. And it is complaints of discrimination leveled against city of Urbana employees. And the mayor has already told us, told you guys who we are. I'm Carla Boyd. I'm the Human Rights and Equity Officer, and I will let Shalini introduce herself.
Hello, I'm Shalini Smith. I'm the vice chair of the Human Relations Commission. All right. So tonight, we're going to be presenting the complaints that were submitted to the Human Relations Commission in accordance with Section 1222G. For those who are unfamiliar, Section 1222G outlines the duties and cooperations with city offices as it relates to the HRC receiving complaints. The information on this slide is actually taken directly from the city ordinance. Section 1222G reads, "The commission shall receive any reports by individuals who believe that the city of Urbana is engaged in discriminatory practice as defined in Article III, Division II of the HRO. The commission, while maintaining the confidentiality of the complainant, shall publicly review such reports and work with the mayor, city council, city departments, agencies, and officials in order to correct any discrimin, uh, correct any discrimination that may exist. The Human Relations Commission discussed the outcomes of the investigations into tonight's four complaints during our October 2023 meeting. The Human Rights and Equity Officer and a representative of the commission shall make a presentation of the outcome to the city council." And this is why we're here before you tonight. "The herein described procedure is in lieu of the complaint procedures, investigations, mediation, and enforcement proceedings articulated in Division III and IV of the ordinance, as the city is not subject to these provisions."
Before you, is a list of the human, the city of Urbana Human, Human Relations Commission or the Human Rights Ordinance protected classes. Race, age, creed, personal appearance, political affiliation, matriculation. They're just to name a few. The Human Rights Ordinance recognizes these protected classes for the, or for the reason a person believes that they are being treated in an unlawful discriminatory manner. These bases are in alignment with federal and state protected classes. Currently, pregnancy is not mentioned in the Human Rights Ordinance, but will be added in any proposed changes. There have been four complaints alleging discrimination by city employees submitted to the Office of Human Rights and Equity, the OHRE, and/or the Human Relations Commission. These complaints were submitted February, between February and July of 2022. Each of the allegations were assigned to and investigated by a member of the commission. They were assigned by the Human Relations Commission chair. The HRO provided guidance on how to investigate, who to talk to, how to contact employees, but did not participate in the investigation. Upon completion of their investigation, each member submitted a summary of their findings and recommendations to the chair of the HRC, the OHRE, my office, and the mayor, per the HRC bylaws. Complaint number one alleges that the city of Urbana's public officials discriminated against the public related to time-based speaking limitations within public meetings by providing some members longer time limits than others. Because this complaint referenced the Potential Opens Meetings Act violation, it was forwarded to the city attorney because open meetings act violations are not under the purview of the human rights, the Office of Human Rights and Equity. It was my understanding, or the HREO's understanding, that the proper authorities, the Public Access Council, was addressing the complaint. So the commissioner, commissioner concluded that. The issue appears to have been resolved as the city of Urbana returned to in-person meetings. meetings. They recommended that the city must, the City of Urbana must remind speakers when addressing all boards, commissions, and council during public input of the time limits and adhering to them for all meetings. And complaint number one was a precursor to complaint number two.
Complaint number two alleges that the Human Rights and Equity Officer engaged in discriminatory actions by not processing a complaint or giving updates on the complaint. However, the HREO believed that the proper authorities were handling the complaint. She did not recognize that there was a 1222G complaint included in the initial complaint. The commissioner assigned to investigating this found that there was not sufficient reason to believe that discrimination took place in the handling of the February 8, 2022 report.
And I would like to give a brief is that when the 1222G update happened, it was in between the time that, prior to my coming on to, coming on to the City of Urbana as the OHRE, and so it hadn't been updated in the actual ordinance. And so the, the version of the ordinance that was on the website and that we were utilizing at that time did not contain the 1222G section, and so that's why I believe that it was going, it should have gone to the attorney rather than to me.
Complaint number three alleges that Urbana Civil Service Commission members and city human resources staff are actively discriminating against police officer candidates on the basis of their age. The commissioner in charge of investigating this allegation found that age is a bona fide occupational qualification for police officers in both the state and federal law, given the physical demands of the job. There are specific carve-outs for this type of work. Furthermore, these requirements are only for entry-level police officers and not lateral transfers. Entry-level officers, the requirement states that they must be at least 21, 21 years of age, but not more than 34 years of age by the exam date.
Complaint number four alleges that the City of Urbana public officials violated 1222G of the municipal code by discriminating against two applicants for the Civilian Police Review Board, CPRB, on the basis of their past participation in law enforcement-related careers. This complaint referenced the Civilian Police Review Board Ordinance, Section 1222C, or 1922C, I'm getting used to that, 1222, concerning board members' qualifications. The commission member did not believe that the Human Relations Commission has the authority to address any changes to the ordinance due to a collective bargaining agreement in place between the City of Urbana and the Fraternal Order of Police. Therefore, the commissioner's findings were inconclusive, and who believes this will be addressed within the CPRB functions and the changes that the, the changes to that ordinance.
So to summarize, in each of the complaints, commissioners found that City of Urbana employees did not discriminate against an individual or categorized group. Furthermore, they offered recommendations for improvements or recognized that improvements had been made. And this has informed future training opportunities and processes for the Human Relations Commission. Thank you for listening to our presentation tonight. Does anyone have any questions for either Carla or myself?
Any questions? Sha, uh, Sharice.
I'm not so familiar with the Human Relations ordinances, the, and so I guess I would like a, just a summary or a thumbnail of what 1222G is. That seemed to come up a lot.
1222, that, 1222G, that is a section in the ordinance, and it goes from A to G in subsections. And the G, it's where the Human Relations Commission is charged with investigating discrimination complaints or allegations against city employees. Because I am a city employee, it's, it wouldn't be feasible for me to investigate my colleagues.
Right.
And as you can see, I was one of the, one of the
One of the people that complaints were made, yeah.
Respondents for the complaint. And so they are charged with doing that, and it spells out in the ordinance, in that section, that, what they're supposed to do. And because the city is not under the, the ordinance for the sections three, or divisions three and four, that's why they, they're, they go to the HRC and then they come to you guys for, for us to report on.
I just went, I kept hearing 1222G, and it's like, 1222G, I'm trying to, I was just trying to understand
And we
that particular section and what that, why everything fell, seemed to fall under that particular section.
These, these complaints are, anytime there's a complaint that comes in against an employee,
Mm-hmm.
they are, they are considered a 1222G, and that's just the section in the ordinance that says these types of complaints go to the Human Relations Commissions. They do not, they are not investigated by my office.
Okay, thanks.
Mary Alice.
This is, I think, the first time I've seen this kind of presentation, so thank you very much. It's very interesting information, and it's good for us to be aware of, of the findings of the commission. My main question is, you had referenced that the, the Human Rights Ordinance wasn't updated on the website. So my question to you is, is that in the municipal code? Because there's a place, where was it not updated? Because obviously, somebody had access to the right one.
I believe they were updated in the municide.
Okay.
But it was, again, it was when I first got here, and I didn't know there was a municide. I just knew that on our website, that there was a, a copy of the Human Rights Ordinance, and that's what I was working off of. And then having conversations with one of the commission members who explained to me, oh, no, it should have been updated, and you can find it here. Then I made sure that I updated it and got the correct version on the website.
Okay, so it sounds like our code is correct. It's just some of the information on our website might be a little out of date. So, okay, thank you very much.
And we work to, we've been working to get anything that's on the, the two boards that I staff, make sure that everything we have on there is updated.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Good to see you, Carla, and thanks for joining us, Shalini. Nice to have you here. I hope that we can have some more future collaboration on some of these efforts being a really important issue in the city. I was wondering if we could have your slides, please, and if you have any other information that you can share relevant to these cases, that would be appreciated.
Yes, we can get that to you.
Thank you. And, yeah, speaking of future collaborations, again, I appreciate this presentation and figuring out some things along the way, and hoping that we can have some other work together, like the annual report from the commission, I think is also supposed to be a thing, and looking into, yeah, all sorts of discrimination in the city operations of the public and within our own operations. So thank you for the work that you do, and I'll look forward to more information and working together.
Thank you. And we have been working through the ordinance. This is the first time that the council has actually received a 1222G report, but it, since it's in the ordinance, we've been trying to look at and try to adhere to all the things that are in the ordinance to get a, you know, that we're supposed to be doing. We have had changeover, turnover in, on the Human, Human Relations Commission, and so when we start a project, then we have to stop if we lose commissioners, and then working towards getting new commissioners. And so our goal this year is to try to get new ones so that we can hopefully complete the rest of the tasks that we should be doing, and the annual report is one of them.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Chris.
Thank you for the report. So differentiate for me the 1222G complaints against city employees and complaints against police officers in the Civilian Police Review Board. Those are two different things?
Yes, those are separate complaints. For the Civilian Police Review Board, they look at all of the complaints that come in against police officers specifically. In 1222G complaints, they look at employees as a whole. If, if a complaint came in and it was against a, because they, they come to my office, or they'll come straight to the Human Relations Commission, if it's a complaint against the police officer, that will be forwarded in the proper place to be investigated.
Okay. You might not be able to answer my next question, which is fine, but I have to ask, because I'm curious. The two, the individuals that were denied a place on the Civilian Police Review Board for, they claim for being in law enforcement-related careers, I'm just going to ask, were they police, ex-police officers? But if you can't answer that, that's fine.
I can't answer that?
Okay.
I can answer that. So applications come to my office. As you, just, just for context for the public, just to remind the public that the Human Rights, the CPRB ordinance is written to specifically exclude anyone with a law enforcement background from being a member on CPRB, and anyone with a felony conviction. Like, a lot of parts of the ordinance, the language is broad and doesn't provide a lot of guidance. So applications have come in. Some, we've gotten applications from people who actually have served in law enforcement. There was a person who had been a sheriff in another state, for example. That was a very clear example. Others, it's a little more difficult to discern. One person had a background in, is a law enforcement specialist in the military. Another one had been involved in training law enforcement officers but wasn't an officer or hadn't actually worked as one in the past. But because the ordinance is, is broad and not providing a lot of clear direction, I has, as an appoint, as the person who appoints people to these, to this board, I've erred on the side of caution.
Thank you, Diane.
That's, I'm, and that, I think, is one of the provisions that people want to look at, for both exclusions.
Grace.
Thank you. I just had another thought just to mention, as I was rereading the Section G, as I found on the nice updated version, because I also am not familiar with this one, so I guess maybe that's a first question. Are there any other updates on this one that we need to be aware of that weren't on the website, like the version you were looking at, and probably the same one I was looking at? Are there other things to flag to us besides the Section G here?
No. When we realized that Section 1222G was not on the ordinance, we went through all of the updates that had been, I guess, approved by the council, and we made sure all of those. And I did work with Darcy to make sure that we had everything and that we had an updated version, the most current version.
Thank you. And so I see, again, just in reading this, again, for the first times being familiar with it, you know, I see that it clearly says to make a presentation of the outcome to city council. And it seems to me that, as I'm reading, it also recommends that the complaint shall be publicly reviewed, working with the mayor, city council, city departments, agencies, and other officials. And I know that we're still figuring this out, and this is the first time, and I appreciate making those steps, and just a thought or request in the future if there could be more of that, working with, just because I feel like we hit that part of working with the mayor and the departments and the presentation to council. But I just wasn't aware of this until this presentation today, now that it's finalized. So I'm not sure exactly, you know, what that would look like, even maybe just a minimal, you know, being aware of this coming up on the, the commission meeting. I know we get all the minutes, but it might be helpful, even just a flag of some information or this is going on in case we wanted to be any more collaborative in that process.
So, I mean, during our meetings, I mean, we typically discuss the, like, the findings of the, the investigations that the commissioners conduct into these complaints. I mean, we just found, I mean, I personally, we talked about this in our October meeting. I, I mean, before that, I hadn't really heard of it either, so, I mean, more collaboration will always be good, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And with the understanding that we're figuring this out, and I appreciate taking that step to come here and get this going, and, yeah, just kind of a request and trying to brainstorm out loud what that could look like, since it seems like it very clearly lays out working with the council in addition to a presentation of the outcome.
Yes, we can definitely look at that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. We'll move on to council input and communications.
To share.
Yeah. Yeah, just wanted to briefly state, coming off of last week and then getting a little bit of the forecast for this week, that this is why I think it's really important that we have conversations as, as a whole. I recognize that there are needs across all of our city departments, but especially as we're starting to think ahead to where we might not be in a position to do everything that we want to do. I do think it's important that we're making informed decisions that are looking at the totality of our, our fiscal needs as we think about FY '25 and beyond. So appreciate the feedback from the community and want to make sure that we continue to have information as we make these important budget decisions going forward.
We will move on to the report from the Committee of the Whole. Councilmember Bishop is not here tonight. I've asked Mary Alice to make that report on her behalf.
Shall I go, Diane?
Yes, please.
All right. On, on behalf of the Committee of the Whole, on the consent agenda, we have two items: Ordinance Number 2023-12045, an ordinance regarding the Paid Leave for All Workers Act, and Resolution Number 2023-12095R, resolution adopting guidelines for redistricting city council board map.
Is there a motion for approval? I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Move on to regular agenda, reports of special committee. There is none. We'll move on to reports of officers. Carol.
I had just a couple of things tonight. Just want to remind folks that there's a meetup for BIPOC artists on Wednesday, December 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Gallery Art Bar, which is at 119 West Main. And in addition to just being a meetup so people can get to know each other better, it's the kickoff for the CU BIPOC Artist Collective. And then, just looking ahead to our meeting schedule, since it'll be a little bit different because of the holiday, the council will be meeting on next Monday, a week from today, as the Committee of the Whole, but then there will be no meeting on Monday, December 25th, or Monday, January 1st. And the, the next meeting then of the council will be a special council meeting on January 2nd, and then followed by a Committee of the Whole on January 2nd. City offices will be closed December 22nd, no, wrong, December 25th, this is, this is wishful thinking on my part, December 25th and 26th, and then January 1st.
And I've been, did you have a question, Grace?
Uh, just a clarifying question, if you could just repeat. So we're meeting this Monday, the 18th, not the 25th, and then our next meeting after the 18th will be Tuesday, January 2nd.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I've been asked to remind council members to respond to a doodle poll that was sent out this afternoon, and we're looking for a date that will work for the next council goal-setting session in January, so please respond to that as soon as you can. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have Ordinance 2023-12-047, which is an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, ending June 30, 2024. Elizabeth.
So actually, you have three ordinances here that conclude our business related to the property tax levy. We discussed this at some length back in November. There's one small change in the final order- There's one small change in the final ordinance related to the library, just, we found an issue with the calculation, so that levy will go up by about $94,000, which means the portion that goes to the general fund will go down by about $94,000. And when all is said and done and the levy is extended, we will maintain our current tax rate. So I could talk about it more, but I'm not sure that I need to, since we did that last month.
A procedural question. Can this be done in omnibus fashion, or do we need to vote on each of these individually since they're related to the tax levy? Doesn't save much time, but just curious.
You can vote on them omnibus, but it would be done as voting to combine and then voting to approve, so two separate motions, two votes.
Right.
We're only talking about two things, right?
It's three.
Oh, okay.
Three ordinances.
Let's just do them individually, so we don't spend any more time talking about how to do it. Okay. I'll entertain a motion for Ordinance 2023-12-047. Grace.
I'm sorry, I had a question, but you want me to move first and go back to questions? Okay.
Yes.
I would move for approval, Ordinance Number 2023-12-043, or 47, an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by James. Grace, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. My question was, just because this came up at Township, as I was remembering about how tax levying and stuff works, about is, does ours include the happy potential, yet not likely scenario that we get tax money back from Carl or others that we might get?
No. A couple of, a couple of years ago, we discontinued doing that because, first of all, it was very confusing for people seeing that enormous increase, but the reality is, if that happens, we'll capture that revenue next year and every year forever after, so.
Okay. Thank you.
James.
And just to clarify, because we're not bound by tax caps, being home rule, we can catch that back up, whereas Township could never catch that back up because there aren't home rule.
Correct. We're, we're not bound by tax caps. I'm, I'm not sure about how that would work for the Township because I don't deal with their tax levy.
They would, they, we would never catch up.
Mary Alice.
I just want to remind the public, because I get this question all the time, they always tell me that taxes, property taxes are higher in Urbana than they are in Champaign. We are not raising the rate, but your actual tax bill may increase due to how much your house is estimated to be worth. So I just want to be clear for the public, that's the relationship. We take a percentage of one-third of what your house is assessed at. Sometimes people have, you know, discounts, so to speak, if they're senior citizens and so forth, but I don't want people to be confused. So we're not raising the tax rate, but you may see a slight increase in your property tax.
Correct. And I'll add to that, while, while the city is not raising its tax rate, currently, we're about 12 and a half percent of the total tax bill for a homeowner in Urbana, and we have no control over what all the other taxing districts will do, but the taxes that you pay to the city, if your house was valued exactly the same as it was last year, would be the same. Of course, the value of your house may go up or down.
Any other comments, discussion? Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item is Ordinance Number 2023-12-048, which is an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2023 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, Series 2014. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
So this, what this would do is it would abate the very last payment on the 2014 bonds, which is actually due here in a couple of weeks on January 1st. So when, when we abate bonds, the reason we're doing that is that when we issue bonds, the bond ordinance directs the county clerk to levy taxes for those in future years to pay the debt service because we issued general obligation bonds. And so this just tells the county clerk, nope, we already have the money in hand to pay those bonds, don't levy for that.
Any questions for Elizabeth? Could I have a motion, please?
I will move Ordinance Number 2023-12-048, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate portion of the 2023 tax levy related to general obligation bonds, Series 2014.
Second. A second. Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. The last item on this agenda is Ordinance Number 2023-12-049, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate fund for the tax year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
So, so this is the ordinance that tells the county clerk that we want to maintain the same tax rate of $1.34.99 and authorizes me to work with the clerk to make that magic happen when they do the calculations in the spring.
James?
I'll move Ordinance Number 2023-12-049, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate fund for the tax year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Second.
A second.
Moved by James, seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And this concludes our meeting. This meeting is adjourned, and we have one more meeting left in 2023. Thank you.